Okay, ladies and gentlemen. We have our collision space. We'd like to welcome you to the City of Tavares Planning and Zoning Board meeting for Thursday, April 19, 2019. As I said before, please, if you have a cellphone, please turn it on. It would be greatly appreciated so it doesn't disrupt when anybody is speaking. And with us to speak at Plant Talk's meeting, please, the forums are right there. And get it up to me. I heard you have a bunch from your neighbors and friends. Yes, we'll bring them around to sign. Okay, next up is approval of the March 21st Planning and Zoning Board minutes. What's your pleasure?
We could vote you through this, please.
We have a second.
Second.
You have the correction. Okay. All in favor, citywide by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Next we'll have is a swearing of the city attorney and disclosure of ex parte contacts to Admiral Robert Williams. Mike, please.
Sure. Mr. Chairman and the audience, if you are here today and you intend to give testimony, which means to speak pro or con in this case, our rules of quasi judicial procedure require that you be sworn in so that your testimony will be under oath. Our planning and zoning director is going to be a witness and he'll be testifying. But if you intend to speak or testify, then I want you to stand at this time of these moments.
And all of you all collectively raise your right hands and repeat after me. Derek, do you solemnly swear from the testimony given this clause be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth as I've got.
I do.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. And when you come up to speak, if you will give your name and address clearly so that the court can get your name into record. This is also the time of our proceedings where any of the planning and zoning members disclose any ex parte communications that you have had with residents or the developer applicant. And if you'll disclose what those, the nature of what those communications were at this time, starting with whoever you choose, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. Start, Mr. Root.
No, do not say that.
Gary. No. Gary. Lauren.
Done.
Gary.
Done.
I have had communications with the residents on the disclosure.
Right. Anybody want to inquire of the PNC members, the one member that disclosed she had had some ex parte communications? I see none. And back to you.
Thank you, sir.
The gentleman that just showed up, did you, I'm sorry, there was a question, did you want to come to the podium so we can get your record? There was a question regarding the disclosure of ex parte communications.
We would probably like to know what those communications were.
Speak your name, please.
Glenn Lahey.
Address it.
Pardon me.
Your address.
I'm on Glen Old Highway 441. I put that down on my card that I'm going to.
I think we gave her her address. Billy, you were the only one who mentioned having a communication. Can you go into a little detail?
Certainly, resident on Lake Saunders, wanted to just question certain things about the ramps and types of buildings and things like that, and their concern.
Could you characterize her pro?
Can you approve the audio a little bit?
Can you speak up, please?
We'll try. Is that better? Yes.
Was the contact you had in favor of the annexation rezoning or opposed to it or neutral?
It was, it was concerned. I wouldn't say it was in favor of or against it. It was just points of concern.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Anybody else have any questions or follow up on that? Yeah, I think that, I think we satisfied that obligation, Mr. Chairman, back to you. Gentlemen that just came in, did you plan on speaking?
I did.
Okay. All right. First up on the agenda is Dora Lake Estates. Mike, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Subject property consists of approximately 9.89 acres located south of Mansfield Road, east of County Drive. The property is currently owned by American Adult Care LLC. The property is vacant except for road and utility infrastructure that was installed for the Dora Lake Estates subdivision. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from an assisted living plan development to residential multifamily RMF-2, which allows the construction of single-family homes, duplexes, and townhomes. Prior to the property being rezoned and planned development on January 16, 2013, the property had a zoning classification of residential multifamily RMF-2, which was approved on June 1, 2005 by ordinance 2005-20. The current owner wishes to reinstate the previously approved RMF-2 zoning for the purpose of constructing single-family homes. The property is surrounded by a mixture of multifamily and single-family property. The existing infrastructure will be inspected and recertified as part of the development plan. The recorded plat for Dora Lake Estates is unaffected by the rezoning. Any development of the property will be in accordance with the City of Tavares Land Development Regulations prior to issuance of any building permits for this project. Compliance with all applicable regulations will be required. The traffic study was submitted to the City of Tavares indicating that surrounding roadways will operate at an adequate level of service at buildout. The city's engineering consultant, Griffey Engineering, reviewed the traffic study and had no objection to the study's methodology. Also, the property owner has reserved school capacity for 44 students. The underlying future land use designation of high density approved by ordinance 2012-36 on January 16, 2013 does not change and is compatible with the requested RMF-2 zoning district. And at this time, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Board moves to recommend approval of ordinance 2019-10.
Is the developer slash applicant here?
Here.
Uh, would you like to talk? Just state your name with the record, please.
John out. We own property.
Okay. Comments?
I think Mike surmised it pretty well. We're just looking to reestablish the zoning to what it was. As you can see, it's been platted out, individual tax identities. We're just looking to do a single-family residential development there, which is in keeping with the neighborhood. Traffic study showed even when we were considering doing a multifamily project, that the traffic study showed it was adequate for that. Here, we're bringing it down significantly in terms of the impact and so the traffic study still supports that. So we're just trying to bring it back to that prior to zoning so we can move forward with the single family.
Richard, I'll start with you. Any questions of the applicant?
No, I was just going to say it is going to be a single family now instead of that's what you wanted to change.
Correct. Correct. Yes. The RMF-2 classification, which is the zoning that was.
Are they still individual flats that you're building?
Yes, they would be single-family on the individual lots as it's in a platted exit. The plat is still in fact, correct, Mike? Yeah, that's correct. Gary?
No question.
Mr. Reddell?
I have one. Is the property presently for sale? Who would discuss that?
Well, we're looking, we're going to consider our options in terms of potentially partnering or selling and so forth. The first step is we have to get a valid zoning, which as of right now, we just don't have one. So once we get that, once we have that established, we'll decide on how we're going to move forward. We want to do something with the property, we just want the land sitting there. It's a great spot. We want to be able to develop it. So that will come after the fact, once we get this zoning done, whether we're going to sell it or partner with somebody to do the development of it. But we have done residential development many times, so I'm not sure if it will be part of that or not. That really doesn't answer it.
Mr. Tom?
I have three questions. I have three questions for Mike. Help me if these questions apply to the next step. Usually the papers such as this indicate the number of houses or presidential units that was not in here. It also stated that there was a estimate of school capacity of 44 students. And we usually get a letter from the school substantiating any estimate. And the third one is my favorite. Is this going to be plumb for your occasion?
I can answer in reverse. The existing infrastructure is there. What is there will be recertified. We will not put any additional, we will not put any additional requirements on what was already pre-approved for that subdivision. We will just recertify the infrastructure that is existing. I don't know if reuse water lines were installed in there, but if they were, we would recertify them and then we'd have to charge those lines. School capacity, they have reserved capacity for 44 students. That means they have paid an application fee to the school board to reserve desks for 44 students for this development. But that reservation was for the multifamily development that they were proposing. The impact for single-family residential will be considerably less than what they already had reserved. And then your other question.
It's a number of, well, you didn't say.
The number of, this is a platted subdivision and it is 26 lots, platted lots.
Thank you.
Is there a minimum square footage? Will you tell us if you're going to have that?
No, I think depending on who we would partner with or how we proceed sort of after this fact, we would look to establish an HOA that would create that rule. I'm not sure, and Mike can answer, if there is a minimum for the city that would be required.
The city at this time has no minimum requirements for square footage. As long as they can beat setbacks and impervious surface area on a lot and the structure meets building code, then we could.
Are you intending to have this community gated?
Most likely. Again, that would all be part of consideration for what the HOA rules would be. It's very likely that we would like to create some type of wall garden around the property and have a gate right off Mansfield there. And then, you know, so we can ensure that their standards are kept up and things like the minimum square, I'm sure that it would be a minimum square footage aspect to that. You know, what that is, it would be overbearing or too low, but it'll all be figured out once an HOA is formally established.
Thank you.
Mike, question, usual concerns, combination of county and city road?
County drive is a county road. The rest are city roads, so yes, combination of county and city.
Okay. I'm concerned about the condition of those roads. In knowing with excavation stuff like that, there's going to be a lot of heavy stuff coming in there. Would you be conducive to agreeing with the city that you will leave those roads the way you found them? That they will not deteriorate any worse than they already are?
Yeah, I think that that is a valid concern, that we would agree to, to leave the roads in no worse condition to which they were when we started.
Great, thank you. Any other questions on the other? No. If not, the chair will hand a motion.
How many motions should we accept? The recommendation of the board, 2019-10. I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry, I messed up. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this topic? I didn't think so. Okay. Motion is made and seconded. All the favors signify by saying aye. Opposed, so carry. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, next up on the agenda is item number two, Garber Housing Resorts LLC. Mike, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is approximately 9.85 acres in size and is located on the north side of US, old US Highway 441, also known as Alford Street. It's west of Fairview Avenue. It's abutting southern shoreline of Lake Saunders. The land is presently vacant and is currently zoned as county residential professional and planned industrial district. The property is non-contiguous to the city's boundary. What is within the city's interlocal service boundary area is established by the adopted interlocal service boundary agreement with Lake County. The city may annex non-contiguous properties located within the ISBA area under the terms and conditions of the agreement. The property owner has applied for annexation of the property into the city and is seeking a zoning designation of RMF-3, which is residential multifamily, for the purpose of developing a site as an apartment complex that potentially will include a clubhouse building, swimming pool, and five apartment buildings of a maximum height of 45 feet. Per the terms and conditions of the ISBA agreement to extend and connect to city water and wastewater utilities has been signed by the applicant. And as per the utility agreement, all new development will be connected to city utilities. Prior to issuance of any development permits, the city will require a site approval to ensure compliance with all city codes and applicable RMF-3 zoning regulations. The property is in close proximity to a mixture of single-family, multifamily, commercial, and industrial uses. It's staff's opinion that the proposed zoning would provide for a compatible housing alternative for individuals that are employed in that area. The owner is concurrently seeking a future land use map amendment to high density, just 12 to 25 units per acre, and that is compatible mostly with the Lake County future land use designation of urban high. And staff is recommending that the Planning and Zoning Board moves to recommend approval of ordinance 2019-4. Thanks, Mike.
Mr. Williams, would you please give a brief description on the rules for annexation, please?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Annexation is the process by which cities expand and add additional property from the county into their city limits. It's governed in almost all instances in Florida by a statute, Chapter 171, which is a forward statute except for requirements for annexation. There are different kinds of annexation, both voluntary and potentially involuntary, which is fairly rare. Voluntary is when the landowner, as in this case, asks to be annexed. Prior to about 10 years ago, or eight years ago now, I guess, all annexations had to be contiguous to the boundaries. That means that the property to be annexed had to substantially touch and be compact with the area of the city where the city limits were. The legislature changed that several years ago and allowed cities to annex in non-contiguous properties if they had an agreement with the governing county called an interlocal service boundary agreement. And the City of Tavares has such an agreement with Lake County. It was negotiated over a period of months. And under the terms of that agreement, we have an ISBA area, which extends, in this instance, out about to Bay Road, I think, and to the south down closer to Ashtetla and to the southeast out to the Boclear Canal. And to the extent there are properties within that area, the city may voluntarily annex those on the petition of the landowner, provided that the city also provides that property with water and sewer. That's not a condition of the statute, but it is a condition of our approved ISBA in Lake County. So we can't go out and annex a property even if the property owner is willing unless we either immediately provide or have a binding agreement to extend and provide utility service to that property, which is why Mike referenced the utility agreement with this particular applicant. In my opinion, this property meets the legal requirements for annexation into the city. That said, annexation is a purely legislative decision that means that unlike the quasi judicial nature of zoning where it's based on evidence and testimony, the city council, who they recommend in the city big council, they elect to annex or not annex property based on their legislative prerogative. So even though this is legally annexable, in my opinion, you're not under an obligation to annex it. You're not under an obligation to refuse to annex it. You can consider any kind of recommendations or reasoning that you would want to on the question of annexation and whether this is proper. Things that you would consider in that regard would be the ability to provide city services. Cities like to try to grow in fairly uniform methods and so to the extent that you would annex a property that was way outside of our core city, sometimes that makes it difficult to provide police and private services and so forth like that. So there are other factors that you can consider on the legislative decision whether to annex a property.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. The developer applicant? Just please state your name and company that you represent for the record.
Sure, my name is Rebecca, sorry, I have a bit of a cold. My name is Rebecca Wilson. I'm with 215 North.
Do you do not stand to take the oath or anything else?
Lawyers don't have to take it because we're not supposed to be testifying, so.
It always gets a joke from the crowd when a lawyer doesn't take the oath, but as.
The reason is that.
You can't trust words.
It's the joke. I don't, I don't give testimony. I am not an expert in land planning. I have simply compiled information from your staff and from our experts who did stand up and take the oath, and I'll present that to you. I'm also, as an officer of the court, already sworn and have other ethical obligations to tell the truth.
Thank you for the explanation.
No, no problem.
It's just like in court, Bill. We haven't ever been sworn in. We interviewed a lot of witnesses, but never been sworn in.
My name is Rebecca Wilson. I'm with the law firm Louds, and I am here on behalf of the applicant, Garber Housing Resorts LLC. Mike, I have a voluminous presentation, so if you want to just roll through it and if we're going too fast at any point that anyone on the commission wants to stop and ask me a question, please do. The first shot is the location aerial of a map. This is the current street view of what it looks like. I'm sure you all are familiar with it. The next slide is the adjacent existing use to the, to the west. I think the next one is also to the west. And then this slide is to the, to the east. So the, the site overview is, again, as Mike said, it's 9.85 acres, which are currently vacant. 8.76 of those are developable. Obviously, around the lake's edge is not counted as developable, and it is currently in Lake County jurisdiction. As Mike mentioned, there is an underlying comprehensive plan in Lake County of urban high density, which is 12 units an acre. However, the zoning is currently planned industrial on the frontage and it is residential professional on Lake Saunders. So the current zoning permits a lot of different things, including residential, professional services, and industrial. And you all are familiar with, with the area, I'm sure, and there's just a confluence of different types of uses that are going on in this corridor of old 441 and south of, of Lake Saunders. So there are some single-family homes to the, both to the west and then to the east is mostly industrial. There are the mobile home park and RV park, auto repair and storage in this area. So there's also a Lake County ordinance that was put into effect in 2001, which would allow the site to be used for automobile storage and parts with associated retail service uses. And that specifically states that they're permitted to store up to 300 operable and inoperable cars on the site. So that is the status right now of the zoning entitlements for this site. I think we can skip unless somebody has questions about the adjacent county zonings. And then our request today is for the annexation as Mr. Williams described and a rezone to the RMF-3 along with a future land use designation of high-density residential. The RMF-3 allows between 10 and 25 multifamily units an acre. And we did have a voluntary community meeting held in March, and I'll, in this presentation, try to address some of the items that came up in that. The next is just a comparison of the development standards. So right now, with the existing RP and MP that's allowed in the county, they can have a maximum four area ratio in the rear where the RP is of a .5 and in the front where the MP is of a 1.0. The city's RMF-3 allows for .70, so it's right in the middle of those two. Additionally, as a comparison for height, the RP allows 40, the MP currently allows 50, and we're requesting 45 feet. So again, kind of in the middle of what's currently allowed on that site. You all have the pending ordinances in front of you, 04, which is the annexation rezoning, along with the next item on the agenda, which is the future land use map amendment. And if it's okay with the chair, I just address both of them at the same time. Thank you. So these, what's next is a conceptual plan. As you all know, we're not here today for site planning. We just put this together to show as an example what this could look like. Some of the feedback we received is that there was a dislike of one of the buildings actually on Lake Saunders, so we're completely open to discussions about removing that fifth building, maybe moving our amenities up so that someone at the pool could enjoy those views. But this is generally an idea of the type of development that could occur out there. And we have a, at least a 25-foot setback from the water's edge, so that buffer remains undisturbed. This is just an example, elevation. Worth noting, this is considering having parking underneath the building. It's meant to be a very nice place so that people who live there might prefer covered parking. And then this is just an architectural rendering of what we're considering. So the criteria of approval is found in your code, again, as Mr. Williams described, for a part of the city's interlocal service boundary agreement. It's my understanding that one of the reasons the state is encouraging municipalities to provide services and annex is because of the desire for properties like this to, to have water and sewer services as opposed to being on septic and well. Our property is required to connect to city water and wastewater. We have a proposed utility agreement that's with the city that has been agreed to by the applicant. There is, I think there's a little bit of misinformation. It does not require other property owners to connect just because there is a line there. I'll let your attorney address that if you have questions for him. But just because we're connecting does not mean that everyone else now has to connect, nor does it mean that everyone else now has to annex into, into the city. So in, the criteria for evaluation is, for the comp plan, is that we are small scale, under 10 acres. It's been reviewed by your city departments and we meet all the applicable goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. In fact, I think this goes a long way to really starting to further some of the good momentum the City of Tavares has, especially in this area where I believe we're across from. from the trail that the city is considering. And so then your rezoning criteria, the effect of the amendment on a particular property or surrounding areas. This is less intense than a lot of the uses that would be allowed on the property in the county and many of the industrial intensities that are around us. We're proposing a high-end residential use that is more compatible with the surrounding intensity and density instead of putting more manufacturing and industrial on the lake than on 441. When you have the industrial, you're going to have more large, anybody who drives it now, you see with the industrial, they have the large trucks out there, the dump trucks. By removing that use from these nine acres, you just have cars. No adverse traffic impacts from the proposed use. We submitted to the city our traffic impact analysis with a methodology that your city required, and it has been accepted to their satisfaction. There is available capacity on 441 to handle this proposed multifamily traffic, and we're not required to do any off-site improvements to mitigate the project. The rezoning criteria, no environmental issues on site. There have been allegations that we have some environmental issues on this site, and there's actually been an extensive site cleanup. There was an auto salvage yard there before. I have with us today our environmental expert, Melissa James, and she can answer any questions that you all have about this. But I guess the most important is that we have a site rehab completion order without conditions, which means that the property owner has gone out there and cleaned up this site so that it can be redeveloped. Another one of your rezoning criterias is the relationship with the city's comprehensive plan. I just pulled some of the policies that apply here. The city shall develop a broad diversity of residential densities to satisfy housing preferences. All new developments shall be required to connect to city water. And then the future land use shall not permit new industrial or commercial land use activities adjacent to lake fronts. And the city shall continue to implement the shoreline protection ordinance, which of course we would have to comply with. Other rezoning criteria is the need and justification for the amendment. And our, again, I believe this speaks to the city's efforts towards revitalization economically and aesthetically, pleasing development in this gateway corridor of the city. The city's committed funds for a study of the multimodal transportation trails to links in downtown Tavares with downtown Mount Dora. Again, this is a project that could just hop on right there and utilize that if it comes to fruition. And the project would be brought under the city's control. Right now, it's under Lake County's jurisdiction, and we believe that that allows the city to have a better use on that piece of property that might possibly be across from this trail. It provides diversity in housing options near commercial and employment, and provides a use that's more compatible with existing and permitted uses instead of leaving it in the county and it becoming industrial or manufactured. So with that, we're requesting approval of both the annexation and rezoning, along with the item that is up next, which is the small-scale future land use map amendment. And I do want to address a couple of items. In the meeting in March, the neighbors had some questions, and we, I think we had a miscommunication on our team as to who was sending out a response to those. But one question has been about the environmental contamination, which I think I addressed in the presentation. And, you know, as you all know, you're not experts in environmental cleanups or anything like that, but again, we have someone here that can answer questions if you have. The density, so the total density would be up to 240 units. That is the maximum. As you all know, once we get into site planning and we have to provide for open space and parking, we have to live within our setbacks and height restrictions, that number will begin to decrease. They asked about tree protection on the shoreline, and we are restricted by code in development along the shoreline. No trees within 25 feet of the wetland line, so not just the shoreline, but the wetland line would be disturbed unless we go out and get a specific state, federal, and local permit for that. And then there is currently, although in somewhat disrepair, there is currently a boat launch on the site. And in order for us to use that boat launch, we would have to go out and get state and city permits to bring it back up to a usable standard. It is not the intention of this development that that boat launch would in any form be open to the public. That's not allowed in this zoning district. If we were able to bring the launch up to standards, it would be for the use of the people only who live there. It's our intention to gate this community so people couldn't just pull in there. I mean, our residents wouldn't want people watching boats from there. So hopefully that answers some of the questions that came up. I'm happy to answer the commission's questions and just like to reserve the opportunity to address any questions that may come up from the audience.
Is there anybody else from your team that wants to speak at this point?
I don't, they don't look excited to get up, do they? No, no, sir. I think they're okay. If you have any questions for them, we're happy to.
What I'd like to do at this point is open it up to the audience, let the audience speak. If there's anything that you haven't addressed, I would ask that at the end of everybody's presentation, that before the commission asks their question, that you address the questions that are raised by the residents.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Just so everybody knows, this is planning and zoning. As the old lady said, that we are not here to talk about the site plan or what's going to be built on it. It's what it's zoned for. We do not approve it. We recommend it to the city council. Final approval rests with the city council. All we're going to do is take all the information on it. As commissioners, we will vote either yea or nay to recommend to the city council whether to go with this new zone, but we are not approving anything that is out of our jurisdiction. So don't think that because we may have voted one way or another, that's the end, the final word last with the city council. So you're probably going to have to come back again no matter what, you listen to what the city council asks you. So having said that, we will now begin the public portion of this. You have three minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Somp will raise his hand when the three minutes is up. I ask you not to be repetitive. Make sure you get the points across that you want and if it's important. Put them at the beginning so that the applicant can, when they get back up again, they can address your concerns. Okay? With that, we will start. Ms. Pendergrass, you're number one.
Thank you. My name is Laura Pendergrass, address 1175 Bay Road, Mount Dora. That is also the address for Lake Saunders RP Resort. We've had a business, family business on that lake for 30 years. As you can see from the turnout today, there is a lot of concern over this project. I don't think the concern is so much over annexing the property because it does need to be cleaned up. City water and sewer would be great, no more septic tanks on our lake. I don't think we're opposed to a lot of that, but we're hearing five more story buildings, 240 apartments, 500 more people, a boat ramp, lots of different things. Doesn't really fit in with what's there now. I don't know that this area of the county can sustain high-end housing. Gated communities, you're going to have to find a lot of people paying some serious rent that want to live there. I think the boat ramp and the lake not being private anymore is one of our major concerns, or at least it is mine. It's always been a private lake. We do have a boat ramp, and it is private, exclusive use for our residents only. So does the community next door. Tavares long ago had a public ramp, many, many problems. That's why it's closed now. We got a nice, quiet, clean lake back. We don't want to see it be lost again. Everybody has a friend that wants to go fishing on that lake. Even though our ramp is locked, we still have a problem people coming in off the street trying to get access to the lake because it is so pristine, and that's the way we'd like to keep it. So the lake is one of our big concerns. Another concern is the traffic on Old 441. I just heard there was a traffic study. I don't know who did it, but if you drive that road, I don't see how you can't see your problem. There is major traffic on that road, especially during the two periods of the day, not only truck, but lots of cars. The road is just a two-lane road. It's not well-maintained. It's not, there's, we were made 30 years ago to put in turn lanes and a traffic signal before we could have a CUP for our business. There are new turn lanes, there are new traffic signals right across the road. There's already 121 houses going in. Now we want to add 240 more apartments. I see it being an awful lot of traffic on a very small road that needs improvements already. Like I said, I can't believe the traffic study found no problems because you can go out there and find problems every day just a common sense mind looking at it. So I think those are things we'd like you to consider in this. Like I said, the annexation, city sewers, that sounds great. Property needs to be cleaned up, but I think it might be too much or too little to overburden the lake and the highways around us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Ms. Lockwood, please.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak on one point?
Yes, sir.
According to the traffic study, a recommendation has been made by the traffic engineer for a left turn lane at the project address to be added.
You mean we're exiting the contract property?
A left-hand, a left-hand turn lane into the project.
Mike, enter.
Sir. Why, you're a lot, I also live at 1175 Bay Road. I've lived in this area for 35 years. I've seen a lot of changes. This is steep route. A Protestant member, I believe, about four years ago refused to recommend multifamily housing. About a thousand, about 100 yards down and on the other side of the street, right now there's currently houses being built, but a request was put in at that time for multifamily housing. You saw the wisdom to not recommend it at that time. Now they want to put 200, up to 240 units on 10 acres across from that 46 acres, they're putting, what, about 120 are going in right now, units? 500 vehicles? Well, let's say 400. Vehicles going on and on. That traffic, number one. That many people, number two. And who wants to live in a high-volume, high-end apartment next to a welding shop across the street from a recycling facility? That doesn't make sense. It makes much sense to put a recycling facility across the street here in that block across the street from this building. Common sense and logic, I know that they have become a superpower. But please amuse your superpower to not recommend that we do something that doesn't make sense.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Olita Marshall.
Hi, I'm Olita Marshall. I live at Woods and Water, RP Community on A Road, which is on the Mount Dora side of Lake Saunders. And I've been there for almost 10 years. I've been moved here in Florida over 20 years ago, and I've moved around a lot to find a place on it to stay. And I found this, this place, and it's because of the lake being so private, on a busy day on that lake in snowbird season, there might be eight boats out there. And it is good fishing, but it took a long time to get it back to where it needed to be. And we put this facility in across the street, and you're going to have 15, 20 boats out there, and that lake is going to get fished up. That picture that's up there right now makes that lake look 10 times bigger than it really is. Okay? Dora's a lake. Yucatan's a lake. Harris is a lake. This is a pond. Okay? They can't handle this development. They can't. The fish are going to go. They're going to be gone. And once that goes, the wildlife is going to go. The osprey, the raccoons, cranes. And once those are gone, the mosquitoes, the pommetto bugs, the rats, the mice, they're going to take over. And then the people are going to start to leave. And even the people in this facility should be in a nice high rent to live on a nice clean lake. And all I see out of this is a long-term catastrophe for short-term pocket money. The only one that's going to benefit are these people that are going to make money off of this. The lake's not going to benefit. The land's not going to benefit. The community's not going to benefit. We'll sell a few more ham rotters or pork roche if we need to save. But in the long term, that, I, that's just my opinion. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Look at my head.
I want to just touch on a few points. First of all, that Ms. Wilson said, she said there was a site rehabilitation completion order, which is not exactly the truth because the truth is that re-order isn't filed until after the time for, for any objections to be filed. And I and another person have filed a motion for, a request for extension of time to file a petition. So there will be a petition, at least one, maybe two, maybe more, filed so that that property cannot be closed out. Some of those wells have not been tested since 2007. Some of them were tested a few times after that, but that doesn't mean the property's claimed. There was no stormwater permit for Mr. Krybek on that property, Krybek, Kryback. So all of, everything that was contaminated on that property washed towards the lake, and the lake hasn't been tested. The area on the north of that property hasn't been tested along the lake. Hasn't been tested on the far east side of the property period. There was one test well put on just over the dividing line in the center of the property, just barely over the line. And I've seen nothing about how we're going to protect the lake from stormwater. And I have something I want to read you here if I can see it. They came out a while back and dug up the concrete that was there, took out the hydraulic lifts. I didn't see them taking out the hydraulic lift tanks. And so it just has been going over, and I've got a little lag problem at the moment. So maybe I can read this, hopefully. And it's regarding a stormwater facility. It says Al didn't have one, and it says, and this is, by the way, this is a memorandum dated 7/18/2015 to Tracy Juiceberry, Berry, who's an FDEP employee. And it's from Tony Sturwitz, a senior assistant counsel, senior assistant general counsel for the FDEP. And it says, and I quote, "In digging, in digging the stormwater facility, it is likely that the groundwater contamination will be mobilized and moved into the stormwater facility." I also want to comment that there is no pond on that property. It's a canal that was apparently illegally closed in, and most of the documents show it as a canal. And in fact, here's another thing I want to quote from briefly. It's from a 2017 hearing before an administrative law judge from Tallahassee. There was a video teleconference, and this is from the transcript. And it says, I'm talking, it's me, the petitioner, talking to one of the FD employees, Tracy Juiceberry, and I'm saying, "What changed on my property to make it not necessary for the FDEP, well, necessary on my property to do the same thing?" I'm referring to their failure to test my property. And I go on to say, "Has something changed on my property?" You said you've never been there before. And Tracy Juiceberry responds, "I have not been on your property, but when things change on the impacted property," they usually change on any possibly, on any possibly impacted property. And I said, I respond, petitioner responds and says, "Sometimes they change for worse, don't they?" And she says, Tracy Juiceberry says, "Not usually, but they can." And then I respond, "But they can for the worst, change for the worst." So just because these test wells are on there and have been tested, they have been tested recently, and there's nothing to say that the contamination hasn't washed back over onto that side of the property. The FDEP has refused to test my property all those, these years because they wanted to be to sign a liability agreement, which I refuse to do because I don't have to. My liability- My liability, it's already established by Florida law, same as everybody else's. But, and that was determined also at that same hearing before an administrative law judge that I didn't have to sign here. So they're still refusing to test my property, and I don't know how they're gonna close out, or circle, that's psych rehabilitation completion order, don't know how they're gonna do that without testing my property, so I don't think they can move forward.
Ma'am, if you wouldn't mind, just quote it, please.
Okay, I also have a comment on the traffic, it's bad enough now, but I don't know if their traffic study included the traffic that's gonna be there through Veranda Park when it opens. You're all aware of the Veranda Park development on Old Four Forty-One, so traffic is gonna be unbearable.
Thank you ma'am, appreciate it.
You're ready to read this quite properly, I can't see it.
That's okay, thank you ma'am. Gary Austin, please.
My name is Gary Austin. I live at seventy-one Myrtle Leaf Trail, that's on Lake Saunders. I just have a couple of questions, I'm not favor or against this particular project, I just think there's way too much information that's unknown that provide liability to an awful lot of people. First of all, I don't have heard of an environmental impact study being done on this property. A property of this magnitude certainly deserves an environmental impact to determine what's gonna happen with the wildlife, as well as what's gonna happen to the people. Second question is, what is the cost of the utility extensions? Who's gonna pay for the cost of the utility extensions? Are the developers gonna pay for the cost, as in many other communities, or is the city gonna have to pay for it and spread the cost over the existing landowners in the city that have nothing to do with the project? Seems like they're stealing money from the present, from the present residents. This project also deserves an oil spill prevention program. We talked about stormwater going into the lake, well, if there's stormwater, that means there's engine oil and engine debris going into the lake as well, and that's not, not allowable by the federal government. I hear the forty-five feet of building restrictions, will they be able to comply with the hurricane requirements under the building code? I'm expecting that's the case, but I certainly wouldn't expect a wood structure to be forty-five feet tall. What are the benefits to Taverres in terms of doing this project? Where does Taverres make any money benefit from this at all? All I see is Taverres taking on a lot of liability. The toxic waste dump that was there, has it been approved by EPA as being clean? Not by the local people, because they may be biased in one way or another, but by the outside sources of EPA that have jurisdiction over toxic waste dumping. The housing density is in compliance, but certainly way higher than the lake or the pond can, can support, or anyone would like to live next to. The cost of road improvements, who's gonna pay for the left-hand turn road? Is the developer gonna pay for that, or are the city residents gonna have to pay for it?
Sir, can you please kind of shut up?
Yes. The last thing is, is the fire protection? Are they gonna provide extra money for the fire, for fire protection? And school requirements? I haven't heard anything about the impact of this four hundred, or this two hundred and fifty people on the school requirement. So as you can see, there's a lot of questions, no answers, and certainly the project shouldn't be approved for, until these questions are retained.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Greg David, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Greg David, I live at fifteen nine twenty-four Dora Avenue. I actually live on the north side of the lake, and my mother lives on the south side of the lake, very close to this project. I'm not opposed to the property being developed, but not to this magnitude. There's nothing on this lake, anywhere this size, or this amount of people, that can access this lake. When we had our town hall meeting, they asked us any questions that we had, and I knew at that time it was to gather information from our concerns, so they could have those answers when they came here today. We never got an email, other than, "We're still trying to get you an answer." We never got any, so I knew it was a fishing game edition, but I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem at the town hall meeting, they told us that the develop, or the developer told me personally, that, and the group, that we were targeting a senior type of people, people from New York and up north, the middle of the province. But they, "We're gonna try to do whatever the market requires." So we, you know, we're kinda okay with like a fifty-five and older development, or maybe an assisted living area, so there wouldn't be so much traffic on the lake and, and former residents, we just don't want a lot of low-income residents to move in and become crime-infested and everything else. But when I heard, as you have been talking earlier, it was, when we stated this case to y'all, it was for local residents that live there, so we're already hearing different stories, and that's what concerns us. We were promised a lot of things, we won't allow this, and we won't allow that. If they develop this property and sell it to somebody else, who's gonna honor those promises? Nobody. But we're concerned, we think it's too big for the lake, it's too big for the property. I don't have a problem, like I said, with a development for something more reasonable and suitable for the neighborhood, because there are a lot of families around there, there are businesses too, and it needs to be an equal mix, and I think that's just way too large for there.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Jason Matthews, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the PMC Board. Jason Matthews, a lifetime resident of Taverres, live on incorporated Saunders Drive, also in property here in the city as well. As some of the other folks have said, I'm not opposed to this dealing, you know, developing this property, he's purchased, he's got a right to do so. I'd like to see it get turned into something that's better than what's there now. I mean, if you look up and down Old Four Forty-One, you know, west of, east of Anderson Drive, it's nasty. It's nasty out there, the county parcels there, something needs to be done, and I actually, I would encourage the city to try to clean that up. However, it's probably gonna be in the industrial area for a long time. I don't think the people that would be able to rent these apartments would be able to, are gonna wanna look out at all that, and I think all that, all that being across the street, the welding shop, the boat graveyard, all of that stuff that's in the county on the other side is gonna be there for a long time. I don't see that building there. And, you know, not opposed to the property being annexed into the city, in fact, I would encourage you to do so. The, the density as it's proposed is what I would pose, and urge to be relooked at, I think it's too much on a small piece of land. While the traffic study may say that it doesn't require any, you know, improvements, I think that the, you know, the real deal out there is gonna be, Old Four Forty-One is just gonna keep getting more congested, I think there needs to be a plan to improve the roads. And I think the development as it's proposed is too many people on, on small parks, so I would, I would encourage it to be turned into something that's more compatible with the area, you know, single-family homes, you know, a couple of expensive single-family homes in a gated community, I'd be all for that, but I'm not for the apartments, I think it's too much impact on the roads, it's too much impact on the people that live there now, and there's just not anything like that on the lake, and I'd encourage you to ask it to be looked at for improvement further, and decrease the density, and make it into something more compatible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Julianne Pacilla, forgive me, I misspelled. Julianne? Make it mine.
I have to. I've lived around the lake since nineteen fifty-five. It's a beautiful lake, pristine. It was in trouble, and over the years, it has been brought back to a pristine lake, the fish are beautiful. Everybody wants a that lake, that's part of the problem. This development, as Lenny had said, is too much, or too small a space. That many people in that area and on that road. I invite any of you to come live where we do, and try and get on and off the roads. The roads are already not in the best of repair, so you've put all that much more traffic on, the roads are being destroyed. It's terrible. The other thing again is the environment. Where we live, we have hawks, we have eagles, we have foxes, we have coyotes, we have alligators, we have, we have everything. It's beautiful. The type of impact into that environment, it will be destroyed. I just hope, really, really take a look at what you're considering doing to this area, and, you know, don't, don't approve the annexation where they can just, it's like the gentleman before me said, property needs cleaned up? Yes, something needs done, but just not this type of impact on that area. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, appreciate it. Beverly David.
Hello, my name is Beverly David, I've lived in Lake County, Taverres, Florida, more particularly on Lake Saunders for more than fifty years. My children have grown up there, they learned to swim in the lake, the lake is pristine, it's clear as can be, and it's only because we as residents have a passion for the lake. We care about the lake, people monitor the quality of the water often, if anything's wrong, we go out and correct it. Like after the storm, there were boats that had been sunk in the lake, and people went out and, and brought them up out of the water, so they didn't contaminate the water. We love the lake, we want to keep it pristine, we do have all the animals they talked about, and again, we're not opposed to the development of the property, but we do think that many apartments is much too much. And I wanted to add something that probably a lot of people don't know. Years ago, when Al wanted to dispose of wrecks, and he burned cars there all the time, there's oil, there's all kinds of stuff, and it's not where the test was done. The test was done on the oil, whatever your policy stays. The cars were all out over the property, and there was a man that lived down the road a ways, there's a big boat out there advertising boat repairs. Wendell Moore lived there, and Al would have Wendell go over with his heavy equipment and dig holes in that property, and bury the junk he couldn't get rid of. So the environment really needs to be checked more than what's been done. Now, when I look around the audience, I see a lot of residents that have been here for a long, long time. We've supported the community both financially and emotionally, and we deserve your protection, and we expect your protection, and we hope that you will look into this further and think about us. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Mike Carron, please.
Mike Carron, three one three oh two Saunders Drive, Taverres. I've been on Lake Saunders for about twenty-nine years, and we love the lake, it's a beautiful lake, there's a lot of wildlife around, that's our main concern. This is terrific idea, these buildings look good, I like the pool, yeah, right there, what a view, what a great idea for celebration, for Disney, for Orlando, it's a wonderful idea.[1523.41][1523.41](applause) But this is not, this is not an idea for Lake Saunders. You know, developers are, they're good people, they, they're nice people, they wanna make money, okay? There's no secret, and for most of us still in America, capitalism and entrepreneurship are not bad words. It is good to make money. Well, you can make money on this piece of property by selling single homes, something that is more consistent with what's already there. This is way too much for less than ten acres, way too many people. It will present problems to the lake. You guys have got it zoned right, there is no need to change the zoning, the zoning is fine. That's all I gotta say, thank you.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Vance Joplin.
Vance Joplin, I write the blog fiscalrangers.com. As some of you know, I've been here for fourteen years as a retiree from California. But I moved here to get away from high density and from traffic problems. And so I live on, for now, along the west end of the Lake Dora, and I'm here really to support these folks who are looking at this density issue and the traffic issue. I've been in a number of planning and zoning meetings and other neighborhood meetings where there's these conflicts with people coming from out of town, like the pot farm that's north of Eustace making noise, and just, it's just, you know, angering the neighbors no end, and here we have a situation where an old urban, just mentioned, wants to make the highest and best use profit on the land, and is coming in and putting in something that, to me even, and they're nice-looking buildings, like, buy great celebration or somewhere else, and use that plan and put it somewhere else. A clearmine, and that's it, put a clearmine. The, and I really think that you need to, and the whole county needs to look as it comes up, at the county board meetings also, the fact that they won't pay to improve these roads, that's, Four Forty-One, is that state or is that the county road? Does anybody know?
County.
It's county road, okay, so, and you've already been through this with other places on Dead River Road, and, and where they're arguing about who pays to fix the road, who's going to pay to put in the turn lanes and everything else, and I think that, that needs to be resolved beforehand. In a previous hearing on another issue, I remember, I think Mr. Santoro, you're the one that asked, or maybe it was Mr. Stunt, there was this, they're talking also about the traffic study, and, "Oh, there's no problem," as was written in the write-up, and saying, "Our engineer said no problem." But then somebody asked, "What exactly is measured in these traffic studies?" And there's nothing about wait times. It's all, from what I gather, it's strictly whether the, the existing roads can handle the traffic, but not how much the traffic stacks up, like on Dead River Road. And even you, and, or maybe the city council, would not address paying anything, and the county wouldn't either, to fix Dead River Road, and finally, a developer stepped up to the plate and said, "We're gonna fix that intersection," and that's what needs to be done, but the, the traffic out there is pretty bad, and you need to address a traffic plan first for probably a whole quarter before you approve any kind of event. But I agree with the folks that live on this river, on this lake, just that they need to, to be supported and have, you know, single-family residents or single-family buildings. One last question I would like to have addressed, though, is what is the role of the planning and zoning committee, and what's And what standards do you use for approving or denying a property versus what the staff does and what the city council does? Because I think that's confusing to a lot of people, and I've never gotten a clear idea either. And so maybe you can explain, what is it that you look at and/or that you have limitations that you can't look at? And you forward it on, because it sounds like the staff is saying, oh, we don't want multiple types of dwelling units here and get it straight from middle of a lot of single-family residences and buildings. So maybe you could have somebody, whether it's Mr. Williams or Mr. Santoro, explain the difference in the responsibilities and, you know, the cascading of the fact of how it gets to the city council when a lot of people disagree with it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Corinne Garrett, please.
Good afternoon, members of the zoning board. And concerned citizens, thank you for turning out. I'm going to pick up Mr. Santoro really quick. Do you think I'm about 25 feet from you, Mr. Santoro?
Roughly.
Roughly about 25 feet. So this is all we have to come off the lake. That's all we have to come off the lake. Anything beyond that legally, correct me if I'm wrong, could be like bulldozes and discarded? Any trees, any vegetation? Is that the current ordinance? You have to be 25 feet off the lake and after that, everything's up to ground? Anybody? Mr. Williams?
I think that's right. I mean, I think you have, I think that 25 feet is the setback.
Okay, so just 25 feet. I have faith, I have faith in the fairness and the ethical practice of rule of law for people in power to serve the interests of the good and the whole. However, there are those that envision who are indifferent to the oppression of others. To leverage the intent of the law with the purpose of deliberately subverting another's homestead is unspeakable. I address the board on behalf of the homeowners of the wildlife dependent on the continued good stewardship of Lake Saunders. Old Florida living is not epitomized by five walled and gated four-story apartment buildings comprising 240 rental units crowded against a wetland. This is inconsistent and not rural Lake County and not immediately abutted to single-family homes. If I was to bulldoze property 100 feet from your home and I installed this next door to you, how would you feel about your homestead? How would that look to you every single day for the remainder of the time you live in your single-family home, one story down from three stories above you? Lake Saunders is encircled by homeowners, not renters. The impact of five monolithic apartment buildings encroaching upon wetlands and migratory bird sanctuary is more invasive than introducing hydrola to this lake. Lakefront property is already zoned, single-family residential, under the county's parameters for zoning. You're good. We can place any kind of office building on 441 and on the back side, residential property as it stands and not have to change the location. There is a purpose to having lakefront property in single families. It creates environmental responsibility and ownership. I have skin in the game. I live on the lake. It is in my best interest to keep it pristine and clean for myself and all others.
Ma'am, I don't mean to interrupt you, but please, your three minutes is up.
My three minutes is up?
Please.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your kind attention and to these human rights concerns. Most appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your time. Okay, who left their cell phone? Please turn one. William Chandler, please.
Good afternoon, my name is William Bubba Chandler. I live at 313142 Saunders Drive. Been there 22 years. My two biggest concerns, and very specifically, are the impact on the lake in terms of trash by, which is human nature. You go to in-public boat ramping, public dock, whether it be Asops Park, whether it be downtown at the boat ramp, Seaplane Ramp, the boat ramps there. Lake Eustis, the city walk down there. And because of the density of use for those locations, there's trash in the lake. And whether it affects the lake long-term or not, there's no regulation or no, you know, regulation as far as cleanup, no apparent responsibility that I see. And so that's going to impact the lake. You know, there's what's on paper and then there's reality and how it affects the lake. And to be more specific about the density, I don't know what the different density levels are, but I'd like to see it on a density level that, or it might not even impact the density level, but it's the fourth story. When you're out on the lake and you look around and you see why you enjoy this, why people are paying the prices which aren't extravagant to live on that lake and for the privilege and honor of living on that lake. And then you would see this, these buildings above the horizon, above the tree line. And it would set a dangerous precedence for the next person. You know, you can't deny one person that you don't deny someone else. If you give someone the right, then you need to give everyone the right. And we don't want to see multiple residences or rental buildings on the lake changing the skyline for the future. Right now, there's no other that I'm aware of, buildings around that lake, as far as I can see, that is equal to or greater than three stories. So I'd like to keep it at three stories. They're beautiful buildings and I want to see them properly improved. It would improve my, the value of my property. And like I mentioned in Human Nature, when Chelsea Oaks was developed, okay, there was some opposition and there were some concerns, and most of them were addressed. So I merely want to impact the development, not necessarily eliminate the development, but I'd like to impact it for the greater, to come up with a compromise. Yes, I forgot most of it in comprehensive planning class, I took it for a state. But, you know, the whole purpose of the comprehensive plan is to transition and make it, you know, to meet that compromise, to make everyone happy. So, one, you don't have meetings like this where you have a whole bunch of very angry and concerned citizens. And so with that being said, I thank you for your consideration. And again, I would desire to impact the development, not necessarily eliminate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Taylor Chandler, please.
Good afternoon, I'll keep it short. My dad, he clearly said he didn't want to impact or eliminate the development. I absolutely do. And that piece of property has the best lakefront on the lake. And it's my plan to buy it one day. Imagine my house is going.
Billy Holt.
Hi, I'm here to represent Woods and Water Trails RV Park. That's been in my family since 1991. And so we own the business, but we also have a residence on that lake as well. And so our main concern is what you've heard from most of them prior to me, so I won't be redundant. But it's, it's just the overpopulation of the lake, pollution issues, as he just mentioned, safety with influx of boats and watersports. In our RV park, we have, it's mostly 55 and above and 736 spaces. And so a lot of our residents go out there and fish. And so a lot of extra boating and things could possibly cause danger and just an interruption to their peacefulness out there. But I'm also greatly concerned about the environmental issues. And I don't know what we as citizens are privy to, to see what they have, what their research has done as far as the influx of all these people, what that would do to the environment of our lake. And so that's my main issue. And it's already been stated that we just appreciate you taking that into consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Kerr.
Mr. Chairman and Board, thanks for the opportunity to be here. My name's Don Kerr. I live at 16833 Deer Island Road. I'm not going to repeat what all the rest of these people have been talking about. But at 40,000 feet, the reason we're in this room is because we now live in one of the top 10 fastest-growing counties in America. That is driven by Orlando, which is the number one tourist destination in America. So now we have a whole bunch of people that live in Orlando that are tired of the congestion and the traffic and the crime. And we've just, we're finished building a six-lane superhighway to drop them off right in our downtown area. It's driven. Now, why are those people moving here? To get away from all of that. And this is what we're giving them? This, this whole thing should have had a 30-second conversation over the counter that said, "A three-plus-story building with underground parking next to single-family homes might not be the best idea." The specific time after is the discussion of enclaves. After I'm done speaking, when you discuss, I hope Mr. Fitzgerald or someone will tell us, how many enclaves has this city approved? I think you can probably count them on one hand, but I'm not sure. So now we're creating, we're not sticking with the former policy of doing contiguous development from the city, property after property. Now we're going out in the middle of something and doing an enclave? Where does that lead? You're setting a terrible precedence for other properties to be developed. Why does this need to be in the city of Tavarez? The answer is because there's an anomaly between the county code and city code. County code says if you are within X number of feet of a public sewer-water system, you must tie in. Then you go to the city and say, oh, I'd like to get access. And the city's current policy is, if you tie in, you must sign an annexation agreement. You probably are aware that I recently was involved in a two-year battle and a lawsuit, et cetera. Our attorney, a very skilled land use attorney, said those clauses are categorically illegal. No government entity can force another individual to purchase some other government entity's product or services against the law. It's been, the national Supreme Court has been turned out. You can't do that. And that's the premise by which all of this development is taking place, is blatantly illegal. Financially, Mr. Curry and I discussed this at one of their hearings. For every residential unit that comes into the city and you collect fees and services, et cetera, it costs you, well, you collect a dollar in tax revenue and it costs the city between $1.30 and $1.35 to provide services. That is a fact. So every time you approve a residential development, you're losing money for the city. So if you've got your financial goggles on, the best use of this property is to remain commercial. I don't know what that should be. I'm going to close real quick, and I appreciate your help. After two years of my discussion, I now have a new sign in my neighborhood where lots, two-acre lots are for sale for $59.9. They are directly across the street from a $1.2 million home and a $1.4 million home. The for-sale signs are springing up in my neighborhood. And my wife is asking me to find another place for us to live. You are empowered with designing the future of this city. You don't have to kowtow to this. Stick to the rules strictly. And any rule gets a half an inch out of ground, bounce them and say, come back when you can meet the rules. This does not meet the rules or the intention of the city.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Isn't there a kind of form that they didn't ask for? Okay, back then, I'm going to close the public speaking portion of this.
I have a couple of questions, two questions for Ashlals, please, for the board.
Can you wait till the public comment afterwards? Okay.
Sir, I came in at the last minute, so I didn't have time to fill it out. Can I say something?
Okay, you can speak, ma'am, but you're going to have to fill out that form first. Go ahead.
Well, she's sworn in.
I'm already sworn in.
Someone swear from Tuscan can just possibly trip, he'll trip and not be able to fix up together.
Yes, sir. My name is Kelly Filial and I live on 4118 Saunders Drive. I moved here from March County. This lake is really close to my heart. I moved here to get away from the city. And if you could ask me this, you're just bringing it, everybody was running away from it, like you said. I had to get bus stop signs put on the corners because people were just flying by. And bus stop almost hitting all the kids. And it's just horrible, like. And I do think the property does need to be developed, but in a way that does maintain the rules and keep Lake County's integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public speaking portion of this. You can go back to the developer and you would care to address some of these before I interrupt the conversation.
Sure, I will go through. I took notes and I'll try to address everything. But just overall, I think that you are being put in a position with, by the neighbors with two options that don't exist to you. So your option is to, this is a voluntary annexation. If we choose not to be annexed with the density that we're requesting, then we stay in Lake County and we develop under the Lake County rules. And if the concern is cleaning up the area, if the concern is traffic, if the concern is the environment and quality of the lake, remember that right now in Lake County, we are not approved for single-family homes. We are approved for office, professional residential, planned industrial. And we have a development order that allows us to store, outdoor storage of cars, both operable and inoperable. And look, if, and that is truly what the neighborhood wants, that's not what they said before. What they said is, I want this redeveloped and I want it redeveloped to single-family homes. We're not, we're not offering that. And one of the reasons we're not is because we're having to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring water and sewer to this site. One of the other reasons we're not doing it is we have to weigh. What makes more sense for us is that to develop in the city at this density or to stay in the county? So that answers the question, why not single-family? Again, this is not a public grant. As Mr. Fitzgerald said, at site planning, and I'll address a couple of these in site planning, at site planning, the traffic study says that there will be a required left turn lane. And it's also at site planning where we will start to discuss what are the setbacks to the lake? What is the configuration of these buildings? We are not requesting any waivers for height or setback. Let me also point out that if the property were developed in Lake County, they can again also develop up to that 25 feet off of the lake. There, it's not as if developing in Lake County solves all of the problems or concerns that the neighborhood has. So Mr. Austin had several questions. Let me just state by saying that we are dealing with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the FDEP. They are who governs the type of environmental remediation that needs to occur here. It is terrible. I don't live in Tavarez. I did not know that there was a gentleman burning cars and other things on this site. And I think that's terrible because there is someone to the west who does have a homestead. And it seems to me like what is more compatible with single-family is multifamily, not industrial, not a continued industrial use. Further, I'm sorry, the homestead is to the west. To the east is current industrial. So when you look at good planning, you usually have intensity that decreases as you head towards single-family. So if there is industrial to the east, we are now transitioning down to multifamily and then further down to single-family. With respect to the cost of extension of the line, that is a developer-born expense along with any road improvements such as the turn lane that needs to happen. With respect to oil spill prevention, we are required to permit through the water management district for stormwater treatments and attenuation. Right now, and it sounds like when this is developed as industrial in the past, it doesn't appear that there was stormwater treatment before it got to the lake. So that will be an improvement. So that will be an improvement because right now it's just sheet flowing out there into the lake. Yes, we have to meet the Florida Building Code, which requires that buildings withstand hurricane-force winds based on where you are off the coast. I believe that the benefit to the city is the city gets to control this piece of property. We get to come back with you all and discuss the site plan moving forward as opposed to leaving it into the hands of Lake County. With respect to schools, we similarly, as the applicant that was before us, we also have a letter from Lake County Public Schools stating that capacity is available and that we have to pay to reserve that capacity as we move further through the process. There are statements about who's going to live there. The Federal Housing Act doesn't let us choose who lives there. We can't say only people who are fourth-generation Floridians can live here, and if you're from New Jersey, you can't. The answer is the same type of people are going to live here that live in Taverries and in Lake County now. And in fact, there's a concern that people here don't want to look out on this industrial. Well, hopefully, this is an impetus to begin to convert some of those industrial uses, which are on the lake, to uses that are more compatible with the enjoyment of the lake. There's a concern about height. In Lake County, the height is forty feet and fifty feet already, and in the city, it's forty-five. Unless there were some concerns that... or specific issues you wanted us to address, I'm happy to do that. But we really hope that you'll give us the opportunity to bring back a site plan, to work through some of these concerns about height and compatibility on the website.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the commissioners now.
I'd like a response to a couple of things she said. Can I respond?
Ma'am, you're going to have to wait. It's now the commissioner's time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify and correct one item. The discussion of what the setback is at twenty-five feet, a twenty-five-foot setback, it would be to a wetland line. A setback to a natural body of water, which would be Lake Saunders, is fifty feet, not twenty-five.
And I'm sorry, to further up on that, there was a question about environmental studies. Prior to our site plan, we would have to go out, flag those wetlands, and be able to show you where the wetlands are and show you those setbacks. We would have to do a species, a protected species, you know, survey and all of those.
Those reports have already been submitted by the applicant, the environmental study, the species report, the wetland assessment. That has been submitted and is part of the file and is available to anyone to review if they make a request through the city clerk.
Great, thanks. We appreciate it.
A question for Mike and then one for the applicant. And the question for Mike is, "Do you know if there are any kind of fuel tanks buried on that property?"
It sounds like there's some stuff buried on that property, but I don't know for sure what is buried right now. And the environmental assessment was a surface assessment, and the CERCO that we received, we have evidence that the property has been properly cleaned up. And I don't have anything written to state otherwise.
And at the end of the day, we have to clean it up. I mean, that is on us. We want to redevelop it. It has to be cleaned up and certified through the FDEP.
Yes, Mr. Wade.
I'll answer the question that Lou had about the environmental... The applicant's package and some information that's been submitted that's in the record included a letter from FDEP that I think Council Ref referenced that was a site clearance letter. That said, "Agency action that comes from FDEP." That action is subject to administrative appeal, and I think Ms. Mahaney referenced that perhaps she's filed a motion in that case or an appeal. The appeal time had not run as of the last time I looked, but it was getting very close. So maybe there is a timely appeal that's been filed. Those are matters that are important to the development of the property, but not necessarily important to your decision whether to announce or to talk about the land use. If the property is contaminated and it's not cleared, we can't issue building permits for that property, and all of this is a waste of time. So that's a burden on the applicant, and it's not something that we have to know today. I will tell you that there has been, there was contamination on the property at one point of some sort. We did get a clearance letter from FDEP, and that clearance letter may be under appeal, but we may not have a final order on that yet.
Thanks, sir.
The other question I have for the applicant is, "What is the price range of, I guess, rentals for these units?"
I'm sorry, we don't know that now. We haven't done the site plans or layouts. They are not low-income. I think there was an insinuation that they were low-income, but it is not the intent that these be low-income.
Then are you aware of the Aqua Water Apartments in Taverries?
I am not.
You're not? I was just wondering if they were going to be comparable to those because those are very desirable and, you know, sought after.
It is the intent that these would be high-end luxury apartments, yes. And by the way, they kind of have to be, again, because of the cost of the infrastructure that we're having to put in to...
And that's very important because we do have population that is seeking apartments. They don't want to live in a home for one week, and it's nice to have that property. The other question I have for you is as far as the boat ramp. If this process goes through, is there anything that we could do at some point that there will not be a boat ramp on there?
Does yours have a boat ramp?
I realize that. I realize that. But is there anything that we could do so that that is not part of the site or... Because I can understand the residents. You live in an apartment, friends come... You know, I can understand that part of it. That would be something that would concern you. I'm concerned with the heights and that. Like, if this were three stories, I think I could deal with it a little better than four stories.
This is a straight zoning request for Apartment Three. And per that zoning district regulation, the height stands at forty-five feet. In a planned development, you have some flexibility and some specific requirements. As far as the boat dock... I'm sorry, the boat ramp is concerned, if a private property owner wishes to seek a permit from the Department of Environmental Protection to install a private boat ramp and obtains approval from the Department of Environmental Protection and permitting through the agency and submits that to the City of Taverries for a permit, the City of Taverries would have a hard time denying that right. It would be treated through the DEP because this is an apartment complex. It would be treated as a commercial permit, but per the zoning regulations, operation of a commercial, open-ended, open-to-the-public boat ramp would be in violation of their zoning regulations.
Thank you for that. And one more question. The applicant, in reviewing some of the other projects the applicant has, do they have any other apartment buildings of this caliber, or is it basically resorts and local home parks?
I'll introduce them. Come on, if you're going to speak, we need you.
Hi, I'm Mike Garber. I'm the developer. In regards to our qualifications, we own and operate sixteen communities presently. We are developers. Some of our RV communities are, you know, considered five-star communities. So all of our communities, we probably have owned them for at least twenty-five, thirty years. When we go into an area, we certainly don't go in to build and get out. We build for the long term. We study it carefully. We've developed certain real estate retail centers that we've got awards on for protecting the integrity of the buildings, the nostalgia, the age, the history. So we understand the sensitive issues with the lake. But when we're through with this thing, we're probably going to be adding for the protection of the lake. Because of all the strenuous conditions that are going to be thrown at us by the State of Florida, especially when we're on a lake, we'll be treating and retaining all our own water. So, I mean, that's not even all up to us. That's part of the permitting process. And as far as the design, it's just like Becky said, just for the nature of this big facility, we have to put in, you know, we're looking at over forty-million-dollar community here at a minimum. So, you know, you can't go half about it. You'll have to go full steam because our problem is, you know, you've got to attract good people. And in order to do that, you have to have the right product. So you can't second-guess this. So it's just by the law of economics that this facility will be a pristine facility in the gateway of Taverries. Right now, it's somewhat compressed area. I mean, clearly, when you drive and you go into Taverries, you have to, you know, kind of suffer when looking to the right and left. I mean, what we're trying to hope is, you know, we plan to do heavy landscaping, beautiful designs, beautiful frontage, with providing city water and sewer. We're also hoping that our fellow property owners can get to a higher and better use, certainly instead of junkyards, which are clearly there to the front side and, you know, along the railroad tracks. But we see that this is a completely gateway area, and, you know, we're the ones taking the risk, and we're the ones that is going to put the city in Taverries in a much better position as far as aesthetically. And the town needs people in order to have all these restaurants and shops, you know, economically sustain themselves. You know, without these people, you start suffering from obsolescence. People start coming into the city, and, you know, eventually all this, you know, you've got to have people with money spending. And we're trying to do it in a proper way and a way that fits the city and what will improve the way, the gateway of the City of Taverries.
So do you have any other properties like this anywhere else in the state?
Of course, this is our part of the complex, no. But we do have partners and partnerships that we do this with.
Thank you.
Mike, I'd like you to reiterate something that the speakers already said. I could hear it from you. Would you define the Lake County Residential, Professional, and Planned Industrial District zoning that currently exists? What can be done with that current Lake County zoning?
The residential professional would allow housing. The Planned Industrial District would allow any kind of light industrial manufacturing. But there is a specific ordinance that applies to this property from 2001 that gives a specific use of it as being essentially a wrecking yard. So that is currently what the use of the property is, is a place for storing junked cars.
Could you define residential multifamily for the City of Taverries?
Residential multifamily for the City of Taverries is a zoning classification that would allow any type of multifamily development that would include three or more attached units. It is... It's a higher-density zoning classification that is designed to accommodate something that's much like the project that is proposed. So apartments, condominiums, things such as that.
So we, as a zoning board, would be looking at a huge improvement in the zoning requirements for that property?
That's what we're here to discuss.
So this would be a significant improvement in the use of that, restricted to that higher use?
City staff's recommendation for this is for approval.
I have a question. There's an exhibit in the packet that shows Al's has only been about four acres of the nine, but did Al's use all nine acres?
I didn't know Al. I have no idea if it was on all four acres or not.
The FDEP released a termination letter. It talks about the address, and in the letter to your client, it mentions two addresses, but yet in the lease, it only mentions the address that looks like four acres, but then they have Exhibit A, which shows it looks to encompass all nine acres. So I'm just trying to get a sense...
I believe the action may have just been all those four acres.
Yeah, I know all the action was on the four. That's part of my concern of someone saying that we're... And I know, I agree with the city attorney. He said, "We're not here today to, you know, talk about environmental concern," but it is a concern of mine as well, especially if you look at some of the... Especially well number five is not in your new study, but over a five-year period, all the numbers have gone up, and that's going to the west, to the property owner to the west. So there's obviously... And that was seven years ago, but there's obviously still some big concerns, and when people are saying there's buried things out there, I don't know if it's buried on the four acres or if it's buried if Al had... It sounds like Al had used of the entire nine points on maybe this.
My name's Melissa James. I'm with the University of Michigan. I did the due diligence studies for Mr. Garber, and in my review of all the research, there was a 2006 Phase One and Phase Two that was done for the property, I believe, by a previous property owner. And at that time, they did testing across the property. That report is part of the public record. It's on the DEP's database, so that's something we could certainly download for you all to have. But at that time, they tested across the yard where the cars were stored, and they didn't find any contamination.
Let me just ask that question because the only thing we have in our packet, it shows some of the older wells, but none of them are more than ninety feet away from Al's main shop. And I guess the concern's of residents is, is there leaching into the lake?
Right.
And to do that, they would have had to test wells down, obviously, on the shore of the lake.
Certainly. So there were soil assessments that were done in those areas, and since we didn't find any contamin... Or they didn't find any contamination, we didn't move forward with groundwater testing because in order to have leaching issues, you're going to have to have something in the soil to leach into the groundwater. So at that point, it was considered resolved, and no further testing was done in those areas.
Thank you.
Ms. Trigle?
I have both a comment and a question because I have not heard it mentioned yet. And I think it's an important designation that Lake Saunders is a spring-fed lake. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
And I know enough about the lakes in Florida that the majority of lakes are inverted puddles, or sinkholes. So the advantage, that is a beautiful, pristine lake. I absolutely agree. It's a beautiful location. But just wanted to add for the record that it is a spring-fed lake. I want to ask the developer, the applicant, Mr. Garber, may I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
You mentioned that you have done sixty other types of communities, but you've never done an apartment.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I understood sixteen. Okay, I'm giving you more credit. But you have not done another apartment complex like this, have you?
No, but we have done building. We have done developing, and we own, you know, close over two thousand multifamily units. So we're very familiar with rental and operations of these type of facilities.
Okay, and so that, to that is my question.
Right.
What is the type of management that is going to be in place for this particular type?
Well, how it starts off, we hire staff. The staff's local, okay? So we have resident managers. We also institute rules. The rules have to be followed. Okay, how do you place these rules? Well, we have resident managers that live on site. Resident managers have to report to the corporate office, and we make visits probably, you know, twice a month going over with the staff to see if rules are implemented. We hire, we contract certain things like landscaping, like maintenance. We have, you know, safety procedures all the line to make sure that things are going in a kind of a copacetic way. in a kind of copacetic way and that the facilities are well run. And, you know, it's all monitored too. So, you know, it's not just about hiring a local staff and resident managers. They have the answer to the corporate staff because we definitely will oversee all that.
So, if I understand correctly, your intention is to continually maintain this?
Yes, we have to protect the value of this investment, actually, you know, institutional debt on the property and they require significant requirements for as far as maintenance and beautification of the project and it be well maintained. So, you know, we have a responsibility, you know, financially and to protect our investment.
Eric, a couple of things, Mr. Fitzgerald. If this annexation or this board denies annexation, does this matter go back to city council? Or what's the reference to, it goes back from, I'm not sure what, to the county?
The planning and zoning board is a recommendation board for city council. This board will take a vote on this matter, recommending to city council either approval or denial, and that recommendation will be brought to city council. So, even if this board votes to deny the request, it still goes before city council for review.
And then, so it basically starts all over with some understanding, but I guess the point is if we deny, then there's, maybe we have heard some of the objections. And so, when it goes back to reapplication, maybe the builder, developer would make some compromise.
No, that's, that's, if you, if you recommend denial, we go to the city council. If you recommend approval, we go to city council. We have to go to city council to be annexed. If city council denies our annexation, then we stay in Lake County and we develop as approved under Lake County current.
Or the applicant can reapply. They can either wait a year and reapply for the same thing, or they can apply again for something that is different from the first application.
Okay.
Or they can appeal to the circuit court.
Say that again.
Or they can appeal the decision to the circuit court.
Developer, sir, what's your response? I, I know we're not going to the development yet, but what would be your response to lowering the heights of those buildings?
Well, I, I think the answer is what Mike gave you. This is straight zoning and you can't condition straight zoning. We can talk about it when we get to the site plan, but we can't condition straight zoning.
Mr. Redwood?
The only thing that concerns me is building traffic situation. I'm, I'm going through that personally where I live and I see real problems in our, in our city just with, with the traffic problem. You're, you're saying that you're going to have, you're going to have parking there on the, on the premises, right?
Oh, yes, yes.
In the buildings? Is it in the buildings or how?
It's a combination of both. So, since we're not a PD, we have to comply with your code. And so, we will have to meet your code required parking for multifamily units. Currently on the site plan that we just, you know, ran for ourselves and shared, that parking is allocated both some under the buildings and then there is some surface parking.
Give me some kind of estimate on how many parking places you're putting on your property?
Okay.
It's two, two parking spaces per unit is the requirement.
Per unit? So, that's roughly five hundred cars?
Yeah.
Don't forget the RP for us.
So, the, so your, your code and comp plan require our traffic engineer to run an analysis based on your PM peak hour? So, that's the peak hour that, that people are coming and going. And then you all have also adopted a level of service for the roads in the city and roads like this, this county, this county road. And so, with this traffic and the background traffic, we're at seventy-four percent of the capacity of the level of service that was adopted as acceptable by, by the city. The, the other is when you look at the existing industrial use, there is, there are more cars with our proposed use. However, the difference is they are cars entering and exiting 441 as opposed to the industrial use in the county, which is going to be an industrial type, which I think is really, at least in that stretch that I've experienced, kind of the most dangerous traffic that goes through there, those big dump trucks and eighteen doors.
But your, your place won't stop that?
No, no, it won't, but it won't contribute. You're absolutely right, but it won't contribute to it as an additional industrial.
That's right. So, that traffic is just going to be worse both ways?
Well, we're, we're hoping to encourage some of our neighbors to redevelop not as industrial also and get more of those trucks off of there.
Good work on that. But I, I'm just, I'm just concerned with the traffic situation in our whole city, not just right there. But it's going to be affected very much and I just hate to, hate to see it be a, a really detriment to all of the, the already residents that are there. It's going to affect them very, very much in that, that area. And I just see that coming.
And to your point, I think traffic on 441 is going to continue to increase.
Sure.
With or without, with or without this project.
But that's why they didn't build down through there to be 441 too. It hasn't happened. So, thank you, Mr. Redwood.
Thank you.
I have a question from Mike and I'm glad you had his graphic up here because I'm a nineties attorney and was a law professor and I understand the logic of separating zones from industrial to multifamily to residential, but this, this picture here is worth a thousand words because I think the anomaly there is the fact that the industrial should have never been on that side of the road. It should only be on the south side of the road. And so, the industrial that's there obviously was grandfathered in, but what we have a situation now is you have county, urban, residential on both sides and we can see the single family homes, but then in between, I mean, that's, that's really, I mean, it'd be really hard to do a buffer like that. I mean, I don't know if a developer would come in and maybe do some multifamily up on the road possibly, but then go to uses that are more in the surrounding with single family homes. I mean, and I'm asking Mike, not the developers, I understand developers as well, but I mean, is that, I mean, is that our goal would be to put that high density there? I mean, is there another alternative to maybe have some high density up by the road, but then maybe the edge? I've seen, I've seen PDs and I've seen developments where you try to, really try to get along with the neighborhood by doing uses closer to them and then you intensify towards middles and towards roads. But this just seems to be placed right down in the middle of what now is residential. And I'm asking Mike first.
The, as you can see from this picture, there is industrial across the street. The current property is industrial. Right next door to it, to the east, is not single family homes. Further to the east is a mixture of single family and multifamily. As I stated in my staff report, the area is a mixture of single family, multifamily, commercial, and industrial. So, placing a multifamily zoning in this location, a budding old 441, which is categorized as a collector road by Lake County, it's, it's not terribly out of line with good planning practice. It is, it is something that staff can support. It's an alternative housing for individuals in this area that may not want to live in a single family home. If this were, if this were a project more embedded inside a single family area, staff would be less inclined to approve it, but because it's immediately budding a collector road, some of the staff can support it.
And they were stating it's going to be gated, gated community.
That, that is the intent. Mr. Redwood, I think that with the feedback we've heard from, from you all and from the neighbors, it is the intent to, to work with this site plan to pull those buildings and uses further off the, the lake so that it may not be that you, you scale down to single family homes on the lake and maybe you should scale down to open space on the lake.
Okay, I got to tell you, I read all of this documentation, all the residence letters, thank you very much. I read the FDPE, all that information, and I walked all that in, all that area. And listening to some of the old time residents, and I don't mean that in an age faction, you're going to find some very great secrets out there if and when the excavation began. And I understand from a developer's standpoint, you have to put something in there that gives you your dollar in return. I understand that and I respect that. The problem that I have is it doesn't fit. Please don't do that. I look at all the light industrial that's around there. There's a diamond in the rough. You can answer this question if you want, but you don't have to. Why are you picking this site to put such an extra traffic in?
Because, well, because we believe Lake Saunders is beautiful and that people want to move to Taverres and want to enjoy life.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
That's, it's the most honest answer I could, could give. It's a beautiful lake. People want to live here.
And I appreciate your honesty. I, I really do. I just, I just look at the high-rise buildings and I'm looking at on both sides and in the front, that's old Florida. That's the way Florida has been all year. And I know at some point, this area has got to be developed. What goes in there? I know you're not going to make the money off the single family houses, maybe complexes, townhouses, something along that line. I don't know. I'm not even going to get into the money aspect of it. But when I look at this, and like Mr. Redwood said, you look at it from aerial portion and I, I look at it every which way, my own personal honest opinion, and I love, everything that you have will store for this in size and fit. Because when I drive through those other roads where the single family houses aren't looking inside, where there's trees and stuff like that, everything's going to be gone. They're going to be looking at buildings. And, and when you look at it from the other side, yeah, you have the, the Butler buildings, which will get some sort of protection from the other houses that they're not, but they're still going to see everything above the Butler buildings. And from the front, you're really not going to see the impact. From the back, you're going to see it. So, I know you've done your due diligence. I'm sure you're going to have surprises once you, you're going to find some dead buried, some dead bodies buried out there somewhere, which I'm sure is going to escalate the cost that you're going to have to clean up the site because it's the unknown that you don't know. I've been involved with, with stuff like that for a long, long time and we don't, don't need to shovel it around. But I, I got to honestly tell you, I don't have a problem at all with, with your ideas. It's just that it doesn't fit and that's my only.
Again, I, I don't know what doesn't fit means, so we're needing all of the required setbacks.
It has nothing to do with setbacks. It has nothing to do with looks. It has to do with a four-story building where you have all single family houses and Butler buildings in the middle of old Florida. If it wasn't so big and didn't stick out, and I know we're not here to talk about the site plan, that's not what we're here for.
We've been talking about it a lot, to my side.
I know, I want to give you my perspective as, you know, if it was RMF two, you don't have a problem. Going to RMF three, that's where I have a problem.
So, right now in Lake County, across the front in industrial, you can go up fifty feet and across the rear, you can go up forty feet. So, we're, we're proposing forty-five, which is, which is the code.
And I totally understand what you're saying and I totally understand, there's a difference between Lake County and there's a difference between Taverres. And I think what we're trying to do is what this, Taverres. So, if you wanted to build whatever you want to add under the county code, we have no set. But when it comes, my, this strictly my opinion, when it comes before us, in my opinion, I look at what is in the best interest of this city. And looking at something like this, if we didn't have all the stuff that was there, I'd say, yeah, but all the stuff that's around it isn't going anywhere anytime soon. That means all these people and all these businesses that have been there a long time are going to be, that's part of Lake County, are going to be looking at this portion of the city of Taverres. It's going to be all by itself and that's where, that's where I'm coming from.
And, and I think that's also what, what we struggle with, with what, what goes there because you wouldn't, from good planning, you wouldn't come in and put single family homes across the street from industrial and adjacent to industrial, right? And so, you start looking at what is appropriate. And one of the reasons multifamily is appropriate is because you're creating more open space and at a higher density. And you're going to vote however you're going to vote. I know this isn't, this isn't a debate, but it, it is not better planning, if you believe these industrial uses are going to stay there, it's not better planning to then put more single family homes adjacent to industrial. And again, bringing the sewer lines and that sort of thing just, just doesn't support that. One of the other items, and one of the gentleman said, I don't know if his, his statements were accurate on how much it costs per residential unit versus services, but I will note that in single family homes, as you know, those are homesteaded. So, so that is what begins to cost the city more is because people put a cap on the add more on what they're paying. With, with multifamily, since it cannot be homesteaded and it is taxed as commercial income producing property, this doesn't necessarily answer your question, but I did, I've forgotten that point, that it actually is a net gain to the city, which is one of the reasons that the city might.
However, another good planning practice would be to do professional offices up on the street, that's your window between across the street and step back into townhouses and builds, which are multifamily. It could be a rental project and you don't have to do any single family on the site. That's not the point, but the point is when you start going so far up, so much density, at least in my opinion as well, I don't think it fits, but I think it would fit to do, you know, something where a developer could get their money back on potentially doctor's, lawyer's offices, something like that, run in an opening. But again, I'm not the developer. I've developed a lot of property, but I'm not the developer. But so, I understand the concept and that's my big problem as well. I just, I think it's just, you know, kind of shoehorned in between two existing developments. And I really don't think that this development is going to spur other development. This company's been here forever, I mean, other than, I think it was Charlie Johnson.
Well, but someone might have said that about Al's too. I mean, Taverres is changing.
That, that single family house.
But those are all, but they're all set back and, you know, like that, so, yeah, there are single family. Mike, how tall is Osprey, is it three or four stories?
That is about seventy. They're allowed for seventy feet up in that plant building, yes.
I have a lot of clients in Lake Francis and that kind of shop on the other side of that lake, that's a beautiful building. Are there projects like this developer wants to build here? Are there projects like this by the hospital? Is this kind of what they're doing out there by the hospital?
Yes, Atwater Apartments is an example. Developer did phase one and is just about at full capacity and has approached the city because of the market for this type of housing. The developer approached the city to begin phase two, had conversations with us.
I appreciate everything that you've done and I appreciate your presentation. And just so everybody understands again, we do not deny, we do not approve, we recommend. Final authority, whether this project goes forward or not, lies with the city of Taverres, city council, not us. So, it doesn't matter what we do, what we say, they have, they have the final thought. So, whether they listen to us either way or not, it's irrelevant. So, I just wanted you to understand that. However we may feel, it's, it's truly up to them. So I just wanted you to understand that, however we may feel, it's truly up to them. And with that, council members, do you have, board members, do you have any other questions before I call for the vote? If not, the chair will let a panel. Thank you very much for your presentation, we greatly appreciate it.
Can we ask a question before?
Not right now, ma'am. Somebody. Don't be afraid.
Based on my comments, I would make first recommendation is to deny staff's request to, at least on this ordinance, to deny, our recommendation would be to deny.
Okay. Motion has been made that the Planning and Zoning Board moves to recommend denial of the proposed annexation and rezoning. Is there a second on that motion?
Second motion.
There is a, a motion made and a motion seconded. Any questions on the motion? If not, all in favor?
All in favor?
Sure.
I look at this as a, this development as a major step in improving that ground. What seem to be talking with also is, let's not take a major step, let's not take a big step. Let's just take baby steps. Let's just do a little bit, this is a nip pad. This is a quality ground. As we're striving to this organization that we call, is to improve the buildings and developments that are coming to Tiberius. Tiberius is now becoming, fortunately, a hot spot. Where we can pick and choose what are quality or aesthetically developed properties. This could be a beginning of something here, and it's a big step. It's scary to make a big step, isn't it? It's easier to make little teen steps. What we want to do, make little steps and hope that we have the courage to make a bigger step. I'm gonna vote no on the proposal that we not approve of. Thank you.
Okay, again, the motion that's on the floor is that the Planning and Zoning Board moves to recommend denial of the proposed annexation and rezoning. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to two. That the Planning and Zoning Board moves to recommend denial of the proposed annexation and rezoning. Next up, Garter Housing Resorts LLC Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment, Lake, please.
Mr. Chairman, before people leave, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands this goes for the city council for two readings, the first meeting in May and then the second meeting in May, which is May the 15th for final decision. There is no discussion on May the 15th, it's read by, or May 1st, it's read by title only, you're welcome to come. I'm sorry?
The 15th is the second reading.
Yeah, May 1st.
You said May 15th.
I'm sorry, the first meeting, the first reading, which I think is May 1st, there's no discussion. You're welcome to come and all you're gonna hear is us read the titles of the ordinance. May the 15th is the second reading, and that's when there will be a hearing very similar to this before the county and everyone being entitled to speak. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure people might leave.
Yes, it's better than they know, because those show for that meeting expecting this weekend, right? You're very much for that recommendation. Okay, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ordinance 2019-05 is the companion ordinance to 19-04. This ordinance proposes a small-scale future land use amendment for 9.85 acres of property located on Old US Highway 441. Proposes the vacant land currently as a designation of county urban high density be changed to a city designation of city high density, which would allow 12 to 25 units per acre. I think we've covered all the details of the property, so I will skip ahead to staff recommends approval of ordinance 2019-05 Small-Scale Future Land Use Amendment, changing from county urban high to city high density residential for 9.85 acres of property.
Next, question?
Do we speak on that one?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Do we get to speak on, to civilians?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
You have three minutes.
Well, of course I'm opposed to that also, but I wanna clear out a couple of things. I wanted to touch on the subject that your comprehensive plan says there will be no new development within 200 feet of a wellhead. My well is approximately 100 feet from that fence line. And there's another well on the other side of them. I don't know exactly where that well is, but I'm sure it's within, since their property is only 150 feet, I'm sure it's within 200 feet, so I don't know what they're gonna do about that. Your own comprehensive plan says no new development, and I believe this is considered development within 200 feet of a wellhead. So I'd like to know how you're gonna deal with that one. And then Ms. Wilson was talking about the current zoning and saying things as about would you ever have a vehicle yard with 300 cars? Well, there were some conditions on that that if they were enforced, wouldn't have been so bad. Al Kriebek not only brought in 300 operable and or inoperable cars, because he sold cars there too, but he decided to bring in a car crusher, which is not allowed, and he was crushing cars there, is how this got to be contaminated. Now, if he had operated properly, that would have been not a bad thing because he had opening and closing hours. He had, I believe, closed by 5 o'clock, there was no noise there in the evening. After 5, he couldn't, you know, hammer and beat on cars and everything else. And there weren't people going in and out of the lake, ski boats and motors.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but you have to speak to the item that's on the agenda.
Okay, well, I am opposing the change in the comprehensive plan, obviously. So anybody that didn't want the zoning, what's the point in the comprehensive plan? Because they'll be back to the same zoning. I mean, I can't see how one differs from the other, but I didn't rate, I'm opposed, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Board members, any questions? What's your pleasure on ordinance 2019-05?
Well, as a companion to my first recommendation, it wouldn't make any sense, like the audience member just said, so I would ask that we make, I'll make a motion that we deny ordinance 2019-05 as well.
Motion has been made that the Planning and Zoning Board moves to recommend denial of the proposed Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Do we have a second on that motion? Motion has been made and seconded, any questions on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two, ma'am. Next up, Land Development Regulation Amendment, Chapter 868-12, Mike, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, bear with me one second.
Okay.
Suppose not.
Thank you very much for coming, ladies and gentlemen, greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Technical difficulty, we'll proceed, you can see what's on the screen. At the April 3rd, 2019 meeting, city council discussed current dumpster enclosure regulations, outlined in Chapter 8 of the city's land development regulations. City council directed staff to draft an ordinance to amend the regulations to allow dumpster enclosures to be constructed of painted metal material to remove the dumpster enclosure requirement for industrial zoning and to add an exemption criteria for dumpsters existing prior to September 7th, 2005. And ordinance 2019-11 proposes the requested changes to the city's land development regulations, Chapter 8, Section 8-12B Dumpster Enclosures. And staff is recommending that the Planning and Zoning Board moves directly to approval of ordinance 2019-11. And on the screen is an example of a dumpster enclosure with painted metal material.
Comments, questions?
What is the existing, Alex, I know we have a couple, it's a white vinyl?
Existing regulations allow, it's a variety of things. You can either do a vinyl fence around the whole thing or you can do a combination of a brick or block wall around three sides with solid gates on the front that can be wood or vinyl, or some similar solid material.
Mike, the question I have is, I have no problem with the steel enclosed dumpster, I think he's got a tremendous document. The question I have is that the new ordinance calls for it to be painted, but you don't say what color.
No problem. The idea was that it would be painted metal to keep it from rusting. So it was not plain rusty metal, the painted metal is in the ordinance for aesthetics and maintenance.
But what color?
We're not governing color.
And that's gonna be the problem. Because if I go back to my friend, Mr. Williams, he said that the city council made that if it's not listed, you can't enforce it. So if you want it to be a specific color, you have to tell us what color you want it. And like I said, it's green, perfect, you wanna make it purple, I don't care. But if somebody comes in with pink, how can you say no?
We're not going to. I mean, that ordinance is drafted, we're not gonna say, we're not gonna tell you whether you can or can't. As long as it's painted. Our concern was weatherproof and rusty, we didn't want rusty metal. So if you have a paint building and you wanna paint dumpster, you can paint your building pink. And if you paint your building pink and you wanna have a paint dumpster enclosure, they're gonna let you do that.
This do enforces it later when the paint turns to rusty.
Yeah, it's a coating force, it has to be, yeah. If you're just like a house and you get coated in force.
Yeah, I just gotta look.
Yes. I mean, that's bad. The recent meeting, our crew requires us to bring the PNC, y'all are stuck the way it is. And you can make recommendations and those will go to council. So if you think that y'all wanna specify a color, we'll put that in your works.
It could be painted metal, painted the same color as the building.
And Mike, I don't have a problem, all I'm saying is, we better stipulate something. Because when somebody goes and paints something, they're gonna wanna say, who approved that? And if it's not spelled out in the ordinance, that we can't stop them from painting or tone? I don't care at all.
The board could, the board can certainly make a motion to amend this ordinance and then make a motion to approve or deny based on the amendment. Staff has opened two suggestions.
It seems like the same color of a building would make sense and it would go along with what was already approved, so I think that's simple.
That would be consistent.
Trying to determine what earth tone is.
That would be consistent with other regulations.
Except that enclosure is not the same color as the.
Is that the building in the background?
That's Gene Smith's building, I don't know where it is, but I think it's a tan building or a sand yellow building, stuck building.
It's just that it blends in with the green grass, I mean, if this were a green. That's the problem that I have is, if we don't leave some sort of guidance, we may not get somebody else that did a good job like this one.
Well, and that brings up how is it gonna be built? Because we're saying that we're gonna accept this. Are we going to, you know, make plans for this so that someone that doesn't aggregate properly, Mr. Smith did a fabulous job, I promise, but Mr. Smith is very thorough when he puts something together.
That enclosure will outlive all of us.
Yeah, absolutely, we should take shelter in that enclosure. But anyone else that thinks that they can build it as is and doesn't aggregate properly and secure those fasteners, that could be flying all over the place as well. And that is my biggest concern on the whole picture, then the color quite obviously. But the color, I agree with the color situation, though I'm not at all, you know, this is perfect, but.
Dumpster enclosure, do they have to conform to the Florida Hurricane Code?
Dumpster enclosures are not under the Florida Building Code, it's essentially a fence. If you build a block wall, you have plans for that, that will be reviewed by the building official. But in this case, it acts as a fence and is not under the building code.
Absolutely, because my biggest fear, when this was presented to council and we all saw how nicely done this was, if someone comes in to vote for it or anyone or whatever the case may be, they need to tell you how they're gonna build it. And if that's not attached, we need to have some rules for it, some requirement. Because flying metal is very dangerous.
Well, this is essentially a metal fence and it gets permitted through the building department and it gets inspected by the building inspector.
Or is the criteria that the building inspector uses with this?
The criteria for this will be that it's securely mounted to the ground.
It says that the code has to be securely mounted to the ground.
No, it's not covered in the code, but he's saying that you're using common sense to make sure that, but I agree with you.
Well, as a builder, I could have an inspector that comes in and wants something to be, you know, two feet deep, you know, concreted in, or I could have someone else that's just fine with, you know, a foot in the ground post with sand in it, you know, what's gonna withstand?
We're not getting, we're not specific in our regulations how deep our fence post has to be.
Well, that's a concern, we're attaching something that could become protective.
We have this problem now with fences, because we're churches, we had the thrift store, all of that fencing belongs to the state of Florida during the hurricane, flew into our property, into our building. Luckily, it's that like plastic, but yours is always gonna happen.
Exactly, imagine something metal, and again, this is not gonna go anywhere, but.
Mike, have you ever had like an accepted list of colors? Because I'm of the same mind, I think the green is nice because if you have sprinklers going off and you got a light tan color and you see the rust or whatever, could you have just a color palette that would be something that would be more set in stone, you're not just saying earth tone, but you could have a few acceptable greens and tans and they have to kind of stay in that palette? Or is that just making it way too difficult for you guys?
Yeah, the only thing we have in our regulations right now when it comes to color for buildings is you can't use dayglow colors, you can't paint your building black.
So pink's very, well, not glow pink, but nice pink.
Pink as long as it doesn't glow.
Mike, we had to put up a fence around our dumpster in rural harbor.
Yes, sir.
It became very expensive, turned out really, really nice, but very expensive. We had holes in concrete, they're close in there and re-cemented, it's all kinds of stuff. So it cost almost 10 grand to fence in our 411. And I guess your inspector was very critical of how it's done. So I'm surprised that, that's the story I'm getting from the management. They're saying, well, we just kind of like, oh, and all that stuff. So the leeway that the inspector has must be enormous, just like you're saying. You know, one person could come out and say, yeah, that's fine. Another guy come out and say, oh my gosh, who does this, who does that. So I'm kind of gassed here that I'm hearing this from our manager to a harbor that they had to do with the cost and everything, compared to what we're seeing here. The difference? How's that permitted and they had to go through all this grit and all that? Could that possibly be?
How could the metal be permitted?
No, how could the inspector be satisfied with this? He has jumps and hoops at rural harbors.
Well, the picture that we're looking at right now is, I don't know that this dumpster enclosure has been finally inspected.
We may have a big door for the dumpster and a side door to go in.
You may have a different application because of your residents.
No, 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 don't use it. No, 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 it's just you take trash out from the social hall. It's a full dumpster enclosure.
The enclosure is also covering the area.
Oh.
It's not just a large, it's a side.
That's different, different applications.
Right, it's encompassing.
Right, it's encompassing, okay, that's happened, so just because...
What wording can we give you to the sound of this, what you're saying?
For, as far as paint color?
Constructionally.
To make sure that it's, it's not going to fly away.
In, in the case of the metal, plastic, it's going to be tough because fences out there are fences. But her concern is the metal, and I, and I capital agree with her, so we... You're going to say metal and it shall be securely fastened to the ground?
It will, it shall be secured at least eighteen inches in the ground. Is that, is that enough? You know, I'm not an engineer.
I'm not either.
Well, why don't you...
You're getting into, you're getting into the point of the plan then being an engineer plan, to state that it will withhold...
And all I want to say is that we give you something to say that that's got to be, it's got to be anchored, it just can't be laying on the ground. So it shall be securely anchored to the ground.
Sure. Securely or permanently, then there's...
Permanent, that's better.
Yeah.
Permanent.
Permanently anchored.
I'm, you're at a budget point, you can go, you can build and put it up some end. Volvo. Will I, then?
If I understand correctly, this is for all future or dumpsters that aren't imposed at this time, you're not going to make it retroactive, people are going to spend all that money. Yeah, thank you.
No, this is not going to be a requirement. This is a, this is an alternative to what's going through.
And you don't have a color requirement now with what you have, so I don't really want to work with it.
We say, we say vinyl fence, you can get brown, white, tan, green...
But that's different. With metal, it can be, right, but, but they're specified. If it did say painted, it wouldn't be an issue, but they're putting the word painted in here. And I can understand why, so it guards it against rusting.
So not, why not, like, say, you know, use this green since it blends so well in there, or the color of the building, give the...
I can delete the word painted.
No, no, you need some...
It's bonded, that's bonded. Shall be protected against rusting?
It would be a clear coat then.
Yep. Does that work for you? Now, you're not saying the word painted, but like you said, it can be clear coat, it can be in it, but you got to protect it from rusting.
The staff is open to the board's...
I would feel more comfortable that it would be green, as this one that blends in the environment, or the color of the building would be the right choice. Exactly.
That's right. Please.
Okay.
To amend this, to...
Amend this land development regulation to add that the painted, the color of the building or the color green, this is...
To imagine color.
Right, either green or...
And this green is perfect, obviously.
Is it transparent with the...
So maybe we can ask Mr. Smith what color green he used in that.
Maybe, yeah, like forest green?
Forest green.
Forest green.
And also, you have to mention what you're saying about the permanent...
Right, and the, and the permanent anchoring for the structure.
Shall be permanently.
Shall be permanently anchored.
You have to say for steel, any, 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 yes. Yeah, this... The steel is coated.
Just so I can clarify, the motion, you're saying a painted metal material, either a green color or a color to match that of the principal structure, and must be securely anchored to the ground, and that will be, and that will be a general rule for all...
Shall be.
Shall be.
That's why I think we said like a forest green color, otherwise you're going to get iridescent.
Yine, yine, yeah.
Green is such a, I mean, color is such, such a subjective thing.
Do you want an iridescent or...
It may not say...
Forest green?
Forest green.
Forest green.
Okay.
I think we kind of tilted toward permanently anchors, securely, generally, permanently anchors.
But now, as part of this, are we also voting on grandfathering? Is that part of this?
Yes, sir, that is, you are grandfathering in businesses that existed prior to September seventh, two thousand and five. If they did not have a, if they did not have a dumpster enclosure, we are not making them install one. And in industrial zoning, we are attempting industrial zoning over forward from two thousand and five.
Mike, I was looking, I thought I saw somewhere where it also prohibits chain link fences and slats and, who's it?
Yes, we already prohibit chain link fences and slats.
So it wasn't in this thing here.
Let me, let me ask one question to the attorney. Can we say permanently secured to the ground because we can't guarantee it?
I don't know, I think permanently is, I, I like that word. Okay? I mean, I think you get it around and put concrete around and...
Securely, securely anchored permanently to the ground?
Shall be.
Shall be securely anchored permanently to the ground.
Right. Permanent means to me something that you can't take that and put on the back of the truck and carry away like a dead shit or something like that. We want to hook you to the ground somehow.
It's a picture.
Yeah, yeah. There you go. Lawyer from first year...
Okay, so that's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there, was there a second on that?
There was.
Okay, motion made in second, it took what, that we were accepting the steel, it shall be permanently anchored to the ground, either forest green or match the color of the structure. You got the exact wording, I'm just paraphrasing.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. I got one last thing to do before we leave. This Tredwell is going to be...
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
You made a motion to amend the ordinance?
Yes.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of this ordinance, is an ordinance?
Yes.
Recommend approval of the ordinance.
Two oh nine one. Okay. We have a second, the, the motion is that the Planning and Zoning Board move to recommend approval of ordinance two oh one nine dash eleven to allow dumpster enclosures to be constructed of painted metal material, remove the dumpster enclosure required for industrial zoning, and add exemption for criteria for dumpsters existing prior to September seventh, two thousand and five as amended. We have a second on that motion?
Yes.
Motion is made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry. Last thing I have is Ms. Tredwell is going to be missing the next three meetings because she is going on a, on a trip. We wish her well, the month of June, I will be gone, so we will be down two members. I would ask if any of you know that you are not going to be here, that you let staff know right away. I don't know if there's going to be any meetings or not, but they need to know ahead of time whether there's going to be a form or not with members. So please, if you know your schedule ahead of time, knowing right now that for the next three months, we won't have Ms. Tredwell, for the month of June, you won't have me, so you're down two. With that, motion to adjourn is in order.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.